That's discussion time. We're not there yet.
Even though we've been having discussions.
Thank you for keeping us on track.
So Clark and company, would you please talk to us about the Edsel Ford Dearborn High update?
Hi trustees. Nice to be with you this evening. We have John Castellana from TMP Architecture and Gary Steller from Clark Construction. TMP has been working in the district for a few decades now. And Gary Steller with Clark has extensive experience in the district managing the construction projects, specifically the last bond issue. And they're here to go over the Proposal 7, which is the... Are we on to Proposal 7 or are we talking about?
Yes.
The prospective ninth grade academy and Proposal 8, the prospective new high school. So I'll let John take over.
Okay, real good. Thanks Jim. Hi board members.
Hi.
Good seeing everyone.
Thank you for being here.
We're going to start with the potential ninth grade academy. We were asked to take a look at the St. Alphance's School on Schaefer and Warren area. And first thing that we did at looking at that building, we actually, we had one meeting out there that I attended and one of the associates from Gary's company, Matt and Tim. Most of the board members, I believe, were at that quick walkthrough that we had on that very cold, that very cold day, just to get a feel for, for the building. Since that time, we sent a team of architects, engineers and construction managers back to the building to do a more detailed assessment of the building. And I think I mentioned to all of you at that last meeting that tonight we would give you a, a sort of a preliminary update of what we think is required to bring that building up to a Dearborn school standard so that you could actually occupy it as a, as a ninth grade academy. I think the building has some good bones to it. It just needs a lot of tender loving care. Things have been worn out over the years. It sat vacant for quite a few years as, as all of us saw as we, as we went through it. So we, we did this, the, the detailed site evaluation of the building. Tim was able to grab some existing drawings of the building, which we reviewed. We've come up with square footages of the, of the facility. And then we were able to think about what we would need to do to bring it up to a, a standard that, that your expectation and the community's expectation would be for a, for a, a ninth grade academy at that, at that facility. And what we, what we looked at from a scope standpoint, and I'll let Gary go through some of the numbers, but from a scope of the project, there was, there's some asbestos abatement that needs to be done at, at the building. We have a category that we just call selective demolition, which was really removing the, the old worn out systems that are in the building, the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, all of the finishes. As we walked through, you could see ceilings that have been deteriorated. Some of them are, are had asbestos, whether the mastic had asbestos or the actual tiles themselves. A lot of peeling paint all the way through. Windows that needed replacement. So there was a category that we, as a scope, which we call just selective demolition. Then there was a category, masonry restoration. You know, the, the building is, is all masonry exterior wise. And there's some tuck pointing and some of that kind of maintenance that really needs to be done at the building. So we have some dollars associated with, with doing that. The window replacement I mentioned, to get more energy efficient windows, it's all single glazed at this point in time. And depending on what we actually do with the mechanical systems, the windows will really help to improve the operational efficiency of the, of the facility as well. And then there's just a, a standard category, which we just call architectural remodeling, which is really going back in and putting all new finishes throughout, upgrading all of the hardware, ceilings, lighting, all of those kinds of amenities that really make it a, a bona fide school for the, for the students. Elevators, we need to provide capabilities for special needs, people that are infirm, to be able to get from level to level within the building. One of the buildings is three levels, the other one is two levels, and they're separated at this point in time. Depending on how we plan it, we could probably do maybe with one elevator, but right now in our costs, we have two elevators serving each of the individual buildings. Roofing, you know, not being able to do a bona fide roofing study, but we've, we've made an assumption that we really do need to get a new roof in the, in the building to be able to tighten up the envelope and again, to improve the efficiency of the, of the facility. Then there's some major specialty spaces that, that really take a little bit more effort than just normal general remodeling within a school building. Science studio spaces take more. There's more equipment needs, there's, excuse me, there's more plumbing, just specialized kinds of areas. So that was one that we've, we've identified as, as something that needs to be upgraded from a, from a cost standpoint. Same thing for food service, being able to accommodate the right kind of cafeteria dining services within the facility for, for serving of food. Art and music spaces are other items that are more enhanced curriculum spaces that are a little bit beyond sort of a, a normal, general kind of a, of a remodeling area. Then, you know, as you remember that building or buildings, they're, they're really separate. And there's that one area with that incredible cantilever that you walk underneath. And what we're thinking of is to improve the safety and security of that building is actually building an addition under that area that would be a new welcome center so that you'd have one point of arrival to that building. And then from there, being able to receive the students, receiving parents, community members in a very appropriate, a welcoming area, but that's very safe and secure. And obviously today, we have to, we have to think about that. But that seems to be an appropriate location to have that happen. It's already covered area and it's kind of unused space right now, but if, so we've, we've designated some dollars to be able to actually add an addition underneath that area to get a new safe and secure welcome center for that, for the school. So that's, that's baked in at this point. There's some, there's some code issues with the building. Although the buildings are inherently fire resistant, there's, there's some things that fire marshal would be requiring us to do because we're going to be stripping out a lot of the ceilings, lighting, finishes. We think the most prudent thing to do is to go in with a fire sprinkler system as we are doing that remodeling because that gives us the capability of opening up the building. We can have more glass areas. We can have some other kinds of, of benefits without getting into a lot of very expensive firewalls and some other things. So we think that that would be a, a cost effective way of, of being able to treat the, the building to give us that flexibility. And then there's new mechanical systems, heating, ventilating and air conditioning, new electrical systems, some site development work. Obviously if we build that addition underneath, there's some site improvements that we would need to be doing. And then there's design and construction contingencies, and then there's soft costs on, on, on top of all of that. So we, we took all of that information and as a team, we sat down and with, with Gary's help and with his estimating expertise, we're able to really look at each one of these line items and come up with a, a anticipated project cost for bringing the building up to a, a level that would be appropriate for, for educational uses for the, for the building. So Gary, do you want to just take us through that? And you guys all have a packet in front of you and some of the detailed cost sheets are in here, even though they're not part of the, the PowerPoint. We've just summarized things within the, within the PowerPoint, but at least you have these in one, one recognizable spot.
So these numbers in establishing the budget...
Yeah, it's on now, I think. Just go a little closer.
So these numbers in establishing the budget, we used current dollars. So these don't have any escalation for the point in time at which the work will likely take place. So if you were to do this workout in 2021, say, you know, you'd add about 9.2% at 3% a year compounded. So, and that's what we're figuring right now, about 3% escalation per year. So the first item on here is the scope items. So we've taken the items that John has talked about and we've looked at them basically on a square foot cost. And so we've put together the, the collection of those items into the scope, the trade contractor amounts. And, you know, not knowing the entire detail of the project at this point, we've added a design contingency to it of about 10%. And then in addition to that 10%, we've added a construction contingency of about 10% on top of the combination of those two numbers. So the subtotal of the building and site cost is total of 18 mil, 18.2, 3 million actually. And then the soft costs that John referred to, that would include the furnishings for the building. It would include the IT that's needed, the technology for the building and other costs, management costs and things like that, architectural fees. So, so that, that brings all of those pieces together in for a total of about 23.5 million in today's dollars.
The next series of slides are just some of the imagery of the building. We, we took probably 130 different views of the, of the building to memorialize the existing conditions. And this just gives you a flavor of the interior. Of course, all, all the board members did have the opportunity to walk through it. This slide here, you know, you see electrical and mechanical systems that are greenfield village vintage at this point in time. As our engineers went through, we really, you know, they're, they've just outlived their useful life at this point in time and they really do need to be replaced and be able to, to provide the right kind of environmental control for the, for, for the facility as we, as, as we go all the way through it. So that was our, that was our task. If, if the board is, is, is still interested in this, as I mentioned, I think to all of you as we walk through, we're, we're prepared to do even more detail if you'd need more detail to give you a, a little bit more flavor of the, of the building. But we feel comfortable at this point that this is the kind of ballpark that it's going to take to bring that building up to a, to a standard that we know, you know, what the community would be, the expectation of the, of a, of a Dearborn public school facility. The location is good. There, there's some shared parking that would have to be worked out with the church and some other kinds of things. But I think from a scheduling standpoint, the time of day and everything else, I think some of those logistical things could certainly be worked out. There really is not adequate site to do sports fields or to do any of those kinds of things. So, you know, if this truly was a ninth grade academy, there'd still be a home school, I would assume, and, and participation like, like you were mentioning earlier, you know, you'd be going back to your home school, I would assume, for those kinds of extracurricular kinds of activities because the space just is, is not there to be able to accommodate some of those, some of those kinds of things. Now there, as we walk through that building, I know across Schaefer, I believe, there's some other pieces of property that are sort of part of the deal or could be part of the deal, and I'm not quite sure what, what we would use those kinds of things for right now because of the, of being able to, you'd have to cross that, that street to be able to use it. But, you know, maybe there's some, maybe there's a, a use, but we haven't really even explored that part. We just looked at the existing academic facilities that now exist that are vacant and what would it take to bring it up to a, a particular standard for, for, for occupancy by, by ninth graders? Any questions on, on this particular one?
I had thought if this was a possibility, that because there isn't a, a place for us to put a track or a pool and gym is a requirement of ninth grade curriculum, that if this was a possibility, it would be something like the Michael Berry Center where the students would do half day at Fortson and a half day at this. They'd be here for academics and they'd be at Fortson for gym and, and some other elective courses.
Well, there is a pretty large gym at this facility. I don't know if you remember seeing that as we walk through it.
Right, I, I do, I remember.
There is a, there is a good indoor athletic, physical education space that is quite large. I mean, and I think with, with the right kind of amenities built back into it, I think it could be a, a very good physical education recreational space.
Right, but part of, part of the ninth grade gym requirement is swimming. And so it'd have to be swimming.
Swimming, it's required for a high school diploma.
And that, and that just, not in the cards at this particular site, obviously. But you're right, it would, you'd have to go back to your home school for that.
It'd have to be a shared three hour there and three hour at Fortson.
Sure, yep, right.
Was there asbestos in the building?
Yes, there is. And there is a report. We, we don't have our hands on the actual report, but we, we took some assumptions based on square footage and the vintage of the building, and we have some dollars that are built in for abatement purposes.
And what about lead based paint in the old building?
Well, we'd be stripping all of that out, Mary, anyway. And yeah, and that's why we have some healthy contingencies built into this. You know, we don't, all the knowns are not known at this point. You know, this is our best, our best historical professional expertise that we're presenting back to you.
Trustee Petts, come on.
What's the time range for doing this sort of a renovation?
What would you think, Gary, at least a...
Well, once you're underway in construction, it'd be about seven months or so.
And that's after we, we have to go through all the steps of getting everything to the state, getting state approval.
Yeah, doing the real design work right now. We're, we're sort of waving our hand at, at some of this.
So that's just the construction, but what would be the, the time? Because you have to go through all those steps with the state and all, in all of the departments' approvals.
There's probably, there's probably nine months to, it's probably a two-year process as we went all the way through everything.
Before we would be moving students and basically.
I think that that would be the kind of timeframe that you should be thinking of at this point in time because there's a lot of unknowns still, obviously.
Right.
I'm sorry.
With, with the cost that you're giving us though, that is just for a renovation and bringing it up. That has nothing to do with the purchase.
Purchasing.
And the second thing is you mentioned those other parcels that are supposedly part of this across the other side of Schaefer. There's no cost involved there, but we don't know if we'd be able to break up a parcel. And then what would we do with the parcel and what cost would we have for that portion?
You're right. We, we did not examine the, a potential use for that parcel. We weren't even exactly sure how much of that parcel was, was part of it. It was kind of waving hands that, at that, that time when we were there together. But we don't have any drawings or anything that, that really outline what that is. But we're just not sure logistically how we would use that space with, with Schaefer being there.
I, I do know that in the past it was used for parking, for parent drop off and pickup, but then it became a nightmare having the students crossing Schaefer at that time.
Yeah.
But that is the other problem is the parking because it is shared parking. The church is an active church. They do have, and the fact is, is that the former tenant was a partner with the church when he went in there. He, and so his, his calendar was built around the church's needs of when they had to use the parking for any church services or any activities. So he had to coordinate his calendar, his school calendar with the church's calendar in order to make sure that they had the shared parking resolved. And I talked to the former tenant and he told me that for a fact.
Yeah. And if we added that welcome center that I had mentioned to you, we'd want to, we'd want to reconfigure how the site circulation would work, obviously on that site to be able to receive kids appropriately and have it a, a safe, secure entry sequence and then also for visitors after, after hours, you know, coming into the building or after school is in session.
Was the rectory part of this? I can't recall what we had said.
No, it was a church, it was the...
That was, that would be removed as part, as part of this.
Okay.
Exactly.
And it's, and it is, it is under for demolition right now. I asked the city. There's a lot of mold in it. The problem is, is that lot is only just a lot. It's a 35 by 70 parcel.
But that's additional parking at least for the staff. Because this is ninth grade, you wouldn't have student parking.
Yeah, that's right.
But you've got teachers.
Right.
Yep.
And then you have to have drop off because you can't drop them off on Schaefer. I know why. They drop them off on, on Ford Road on Outer Drive.
Well, we, there might be some things we could do on Schaefer as far as coming in under that overhang that's there, you know, right now. Because it's a wide open space. It's quite a cantilever at that, at that facility at this point in time. And if we build that welcome center underneath there as well, we, there might be a way to, to fashion that.
How big is that area? Is that enough room for like 24 to 26 parking spots?
Underneath there?
We're, we're going to demolish the part of the building?
No, not, no, it's, it's smaller than that. It's probably 10 spaces at the most. I'd say about 10.
That's how much the city has, has the lots, usually about 10 to 12 spaces.
But every, every bit's going to help, obviously, you know?
Sure, sure, sure.
Like I mentioned, the bones are good. The building is inherently structurally sound. It's just tired and needs some tender loving care, you know, to get, to bring it back up to a particular standard that could be a real community asset.
Thank you for your work. It was a short notice and we appreciate, yeah.
Yes, and like I said, if you, if you want us to do more detail on it, we're, we're perfectly willing to do that, but we thought we wanted to at least give you a feel for what it could take to bring it up to that kind of a level and the, the kind of timing that it would entail.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Can we move to the next item?
And that would be them on the high school.
Yeah.
Oh, same.
Yeah, same. We're, we're interchangeable here.
All right, good.
The other task that, that you asked us to look at was to, if, if the district would be considering building a fourth high school, you know, what, what would it mean? And what, of varying sizes, just to give you a feel for. And what we were asked to look at was a 1,200 student school, a 1,400 student school, a 1,600 student school and a 2,000 student school. Pretty open ended, obviously, with a site that we don't know where any of these sites would be. Obviously in a, in an urban environment, site is really precious and the buildings would need to be multi-story, probably three or four levels to make it appropriate because of, of precious site that is not readily available to, to build a, you know, if you were building a, a 2,000 student high school out in the, the suburbs, you might want a 70 to acre, 80 acre site. That's just not going to happen in, in a city in, in your community. Cass Tech High School, which was one of our projects for, for Detroit, it's 2,200 students and it's on a 11 acre site, to give you a feel, but it's seven levels as well.
So what's the bare minimum size of a site we're talking about for these?
Yeah, let's, let's just go through that a, a second. We estimated just based on, again, our, our historical experience, that a, a 1,200 student high school would require about 246,000 square feet of, of gross area. That's sort of everything that would go into it. For 1,200, we would not have a pool or an auditorium. We just made that assumption for that size at this point in time. For a 1,400 student capacity, oh, and then going back, that would require a minimum of 10 to 12 acres from a site standpoint for the 1,200. 1,400 student capacity would require about 308,000 square feet, again, based on, on rules of thumb that we use when we design, you know, new buildings and how many square feet per student to come up with the right kind of comprehensive kinds of facilities. We made the assumption on that one that that would just include an auditorium, but not a pool at that size. Just giving you some variety here. And it, and it affects the, it affects the unit pricing once you put some of those kinds of facilities within. A 1,600 student capacity...
Oh, what's the acreage on?
Oh, acreage on that is about 15 acres as a minimum number.
Thank you.
All right, and probably four to five stories would probably be the kind of size that that building would be. 1,600 student capacity, we need about 18 acres, we, we think, even though Cass Tech was only 11, but we think that 18 is probably the right minimum size that we would, we would recommend. 376,000 square feet, and that would include a pool and an auditorium in that size facility. And then a 2,000 student capacity, again, we think that 18 acres and maybe it's one extra level of, of floor space, 480,000 square feet, and that would also include a pool and a auditorium from, from that standpoint. The, the last sheet that you have in your little packet just gives you a, a summary of, of all of those items, the gross square footage, the unit pricing that we used. Gary, do you want to just take them through just some rough dollar amounts now based on those kinds of parameters that we, that we had set up? Whether they, we just wanted to give you some, some options to look at.
Yeah, so the square foot cost, like John mentioned, it varies depending on whether it has a pool or auditorium. So the third column in, you can see that our square footage cost varies based on that, really. That's the, the driver in changing square footage costs from $220 square foot to $265 a square foot to include more amenities, which are obviously more expensive per square foot to construct. So then as we move across, we pick up some site development costs, some building costs, and then again, the soft costs that I talked about earlier that are the technology furnishings and fees and things.
Right.
And then we've got that total project cost. And to the right, we've put escalation factors on it based on whatever year these, each one of these four options might be constructed. So like I said, in say the year 2021, if that's when this were being built, you'd add about 9.3% to that number. So you'd be up around 191 million for that largest project.
And these from a timing standpoint, like you were asking about before, I think design on these would, would be at least 12 months. And construction will, will vary from 14 months probably for the smaller one, all the way up to two years for the, for the larger ones. Somewhere's in that, that kind of, that kind of figure. So these, these project costs in 2000 or 2018 vary from about 75 million for the smaller school, up to 175 million for the, for the larger, for the larger one. And then the, the last couple of slides in here, let's just give you a flavor of, of some schools that are about that size. This is Tecumseh, the first one was Tecumseh High School. That's about 1,200, 11 to 1,200 students. This is Northern High School. This is out in Portage, out on the west side of the state, a fairly tight, tight site. Ann Arbor, Skyline High School, this was a fairly large site, but the building is very compact and multi-level, as you can see in that, in that drawing. And then the last one was the, was the Cass Tech one, which is the, sort of the granddaddy one on a very, very small, very small site. And Cass Tech was right about 480,000 square feet, which is really similar to what we were looking at here for a 2,000 student comprehensive high school. So that was our task on that piece, to just give you a feel for, for what that is. The, the escalation figures start to really escalate and we're really seeing the pricing today, really. It's not just a guess anymore, it's reality.
So if we're taking this to the citizens and they vote and it passes, we're... we're looking at twenty-twenty-one to start construction?
Basically.
Basically. So we're not looking at the seventies, or the seventy-four to one-seventy-five. We're looking at almost eighty-two to one-ninety.
We are. We had to come up with a baseline and then we build upon that, from that, from that baseline. But yeah, if you had a, an issue in November of nineteen, yeah, by the time you went through the design and everything else, yeah, construction would start in like twenty-twenty-one, somewhere's in that range. And would be occupiable then, two years later, or depending on the size of the building.
I was gonna ask you, uh, in the previous presentation, it listed the square footage of our existing buildings. Both Edsel and Dearborn High are currently under the two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand square feet that you talk about for a twelve-hundred student capacity.
Yeah.
But they've got many more students and pools and auditoriums. How is there such a discrepancy between these numbers and what we've already got?
I think today, uh, if we were starting from scratch on a, on a newer facility, you would be building in, uh, more flexible instructional spaces with flexible furniture that takes more space to be able to accommodate kids working in groups rather than just sitting in, you know, tablet armchairs or, or, you know, the, like, like when we went to, to school. This is really based on, on current modern learning methodology, uh, from, from that standpoint. Collaboration areas are, are something that, that, uh, kids are demanding today. They're working in groups. They're working in, in a much more open kind of an environment. And that's been, that's factored into these, these figures at this point in time. Yeah, there's plenty of examples of, of ones that, that have, uh, you know, have smaller spaces. Some of the, the classroom areas are, you know, seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. We're looking at classrooms here that are probably nine to a thousand square feet, to give you that kind of flexibility. And we're using an average of just twenty-five students per teaching station. And, you know, you can, you can put thirty in there, obviously, or thirty-two. But that's just sound planning kind of, of, of advice at this early stage. You know, you're not gonna try to squeeze it down to the, to the nth degree.
But if we wanted to, just be bare bones, but still have the amenities of a pool and an auditorium and a cafeteria and that kind of stuff. But the classroom space not to be, if, just if, how much would that dollar figure change?
Oh, I, you know, maybe ten percent at the most, I'd say. You know, I, I, I wouldn't say it wouldn't be more than that.
It wouldn't be a, a.
It would not be, you know, wouldn't be thirty percent.
Wouldn't be halved. It wouldn't be, yeah, okay.
I'd say about ten, about ten percent.
So we could basically do a twelve-hundred student capacity building with a pool and auditorium for about ninety? A little over ninety?
We'd, we'd have to check back through that one because the pool and the auditorium, we didn't, we didn't have that in there, but we could, we could factor that in.
Well, I added the ten percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You could use that, that kind of a number, yeah. That's right. That's right. Of course, site selection is a big deal, you know? Finding the right location and making sure that it's environmentally appropriate to build it.
Quick question. That number that you gave us, that does not include purchase of land, does it?
It does not. This is just, uh, the building and all of the soft costs, you know? Furniture, turnkey minus the, the property. Site development is there, you know, developing the site, but not the purchase price of, of a piece of property.
Perhaps, is it okay if we move on to Edsel Ford and Dearborn High construction? If you kindly move to that topic?
Are we gonna go over the numbers for the ninth grade academy? Student numbers?
Oh. Well, the, uh, it was, it was on Abe's presentation on number seven. It was the one that he presented at the last board meeting? Sure, we, I mean, we can do that.
That's what we were supposed to come back to. I believe that's what we said before we went to break.
I.
Well, we can, we can pull it up. We can pull the numbers.
I mean, we looked at the St. Alphonsus as the ninth grade one, but we did not look at anything more than that, yeah.
No, 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 no. No, thank you for your report. Nothing to report.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Our concern now is how does it affect the students if this was to?
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing.
More, more philosophical discussion about a ninth grade academy than?
David, you could pull up that slide seven, just so they could see. I'm not sure. I didn't see Abe over there. And, and while he's doing that, though, since you were talking to us about the ninth grade, what type of capacity were you assuming in that building?
Uh, about eight to nine-hundred.
Okay.
Looking at the kinds of spaces that are there now.
Okay.
Somewhere's in that, in that figure, depending again on how many, how many students per teaching station. Classrooms at the St. Alphonsus, pretty large, they're, they're pretty good-sized rooms. I was, uh, impressed with the size of, of those rooms.
They were very big classrooms. Just a quick question now. I know that we have some numbers as to what it would take to build a building. We don't have numbers as to purchase land, but do we have numbers, Tom, specifically as to operational costs of the building, you know, to maintain it or staffing the building or anything like that, whether for a ninth grade academy or for a new high school?
We started looking at that, but until we actually know how it was designed and the final implication, we didn't come to any significant number because obviously some of the staff at existing building would move. But then you have to worry about the stability ratios of how many staff to students. So we didn't get too far into that discussion until it was a, a more of a, a focus that the board wanted us to look into.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for your due diligence.
We'll have Abe come up just to do a, on slide seven. I think it was proposal seven. I think you're pulling.
Okay. The numbers for the ninth grade academy. If you were to have a ninth grade academy, you're, you're obviously gonna alleviate a lot of space at Dearborn High and considerable amount of space at Fortson as well. How you divide the population, pretty much, we would keep stout at Dearborn High just because, you know, again, you can't just keep Bryant and Smith, uh, this, you know, the small number of Smith students that we get there. So we'd need to supplement that. So you'd have the Bryant-Smith in stout. You're taking out Eunice out of Dearborn High. And then you're, uh, looking at the Fortson High School. So you'd, you go from Lori-Woodworth. So you'd have the, all of Lori freshman class, all of Woodworth freshman class. The same stout twenty students, um, and the Eunice freshman class. You take all those out, give you about seven-hundred-and-seventy at, at the ninth grade academy and twenty-three-hundred at the high school because the high school would then just be sophomores through, uh, senior year. Edsel Ford, you're not going to be adding much at all, so you'd just be at sixteen-ninety at Edsel Ford. Would just be the same, the same existing population at Edsel Ford.
What's the busing?
Busing, I mean, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to figure out what the busing is because it depends on where the school would be. So if, if you're not busing those ninth grade students at all, then you're busing, uh, a lot of it goes down. You'd still have, Mark, how many would we have for, just for stout if you eliminate Eunice from Dearborn High? You eliminate two buses, right? I think it's two. I think it's two buses. So you'd be at eight at Dearborn High. Edsel Ford was, I'm sorry, not eight. Dearborn High is fourteen, so you'd be twelve at Dearborn High. Sorry. And then, uh, Edsel Ford, you would still be at ten because the population doesn't change at Edsel. So it's really not much of a decrease in busing unless, again, you might have to increase busing depending on where the, the ninth grade academy is and if you have to bus those students there. But they're still, they're still gonna be at Dearborn High, so you'd still need them. It's how many Eunice buses, which is two, I think. Yeah, yeah. So yes, you'd have eight Dearborn High buses and the same ten that we currently have. I'm sorry, twelve Dearborn High buses and the same ten that we have at Edsel Ford would still be there.
Any discussion? Yes.
Tom, unless you're ready for this question, it's probably gonna be difficult. But if you were to go this route, how much, how many millions of dollars would you be saving if you didn't have to spend it at Dearborn High, at Edsel Ford? Do you have any idea?
Well, for the construction side, you're looking at roughly three-point, uh, let me make sure I got that number right. Three-point-three million for the four classroom additions, what we budgeted. Uh, we just had our bid openings today and the actual construction cost is around two-point-six, so we're within that budget. At Edsel Ford, it was three-point-four million was the estimated for the eight classroom addition. And for the sixth classroom addition at Berry is five-point-five million.
But that would be offset by the cost of a ninth grade academy being?
Sure, sure.
So what was the total then?
Not, not a savings, really.
Well, it's not savings. We're just trying to try, try, try to compare apples to apples here. If we're not gonna be doing additions at the other buildings and?
But I'm just saying, it's not, we wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a savings because we'd just be trading that funding for a ninth grade academy.
Exactly. That's exactly my point is. And to answer Trustee Hamud's, uh, question, what is that, five, ten, thirteen?
Twelve-point-two million.
How many?
Twelve-point-two million is the total of those three.
I got three-point-three. I didn't jot down what, uh, each individual's.
Edsel Ford was three-point-four.
Yes.
Dearborn High was three-point-three, and the Berry Center was five-point-five.
What was the two-point-six then?
That was the actual bid price for our actual construction that we had opened today, which means we're right within that budget, Jerry.
Uh, the other quick questions to the high school principals, Principal Scott Bolt and Martin. Looking at these numbers, how does this affect your schools? For your building, Principal Martin, it brings your numbers down to seventeen-eighty, and for Edsel Ford it'll be sixteen-ninety. How does that affect your buildings? It's positive, negative? I think I know the answers, though.
So the student number would be positive. I don't know that you're gonna find a lot of research that supports standable ninth grade academies in terms of their, um, we talked about the social, emotional.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the numbers at your, in your building. You said two-thousand is manageable. This is gonna drop you below eighteen-hundred. How would it affect the education?
So it would, it would benefit us, the same as five-A and five-B. When I had mentioned, we're about two-hundred students more than we need to be. Our number at the max, in my opinion, is somewhere between seventeen and eighteen-hundred. So if they got us below that, that would be helpful.
I'm feeling the vibes from Scott. I know his answer, but I still would like to hear it.
Any growth is gonna help us with sports and with activities, and that's still a manageable number.
Okay, so some pros and cons here. Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment? The Michael Berry would be something that our administration may be recommended regardless of the capacity just because of the program, if we wanna expand. So just, just to be aware of that, that even if you did go for a ninth grade academy, we may be still having a conversation on the Michael Berry Center, given that we want programs that, you know, are effective for students. Not, that wouldn't be looking at solving the high school capacity. It would be looking at enhancing what we're trying to do with the academies, with the research heoms doing, with Dr. Green, and all the things we're trying to do with the careers and the things that, you know, the governor has even been pushing across the state. So not to say that we have to do it, but just if you wanna think about curriculum instruction and career readiness, take the, what did you say, Tom? It was five-point? Yeah, so it, it may be something we may wanna do anyway, just to enhance our offerings. And I know Dr. Mosell isn't working, you know, heavily with, uh, Dr. Green on some of those program expansion and what we can do because we are tight at that space between special ed, adult ed, and other things that is not directly related to the capacity, even though it does, if you expand it, as Ms. Alcadre said, it would, it would still help the population. Um, but again, just be aware of that factor.
Yes, Trustee Hamud.
Can the high school survive another two years at the capacity levels you have now if we were to hold off and attempt to do a ninth grade academy?
So I think that's, that's for me. We're surviving now. When I spoke to you guys last time, I said, you know, it, it. Everybody?
Knowing that there's a solution in the near future that is tangible, I think makes things a little bit more livable. If we get to the four classrooms that we're adding, that's gonna help. So it's, it's definitely survivable. It's just not ideal.
But you would still need your four, at least your four additions?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that would not be taken off the table?
I would hope not.
Potentially.
Very good point. Real quick, just to follow up on what Dr. Milka was saying. The discussion of Michael Berry Career Center, that's just still a discussion right now. Nothing's been approved.
Correct.
And I agree with Principal Alcadre, uh, her comments about creating more opportunities. But at that point, when our numbers at Dearborn High, Edsel Ford, and at Fortson are more manageable, we can do things at the individual buildings, too. Doesn't have to go to, you know, you can do something at Edsel Ford, going back to the days, dinosaur days when I was back in high school and we had actually, uh, was different programs at the different buildings. Just, just putting that out there. So the, the money that we're talking about to spend at Michael Berry Career Center is just, is still a discussion right now. Five and a half million dollars.
Trustee Hamud?
And I know we asked both principals specifically as to Dearborn and Edsel and how a ninth grade academy, uh, in terms of numbers, would affect your schools. So a ninth grade academy would only be for Fortson students. And when we're talking about a ninth grade academy, specifically in this case, we are talking about Fortson, East End Kids. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I, and I talked about this last time, and as we're discussing this, sometimes it bothers me when we're talking about our kids' like numbers. Where do we, you know, if you take fifty out of here and put, you know, a hundred in here and so on. That conversation is really bothersome to me. My question is, specifically to the Fortson kids, what kind of programs does Fortson currently have that a ninth grade academy would affect? Specifically, affect the ninth graders? Are there any programs right now in place? I know, I believe that there's, I think it's called Link Crew, uh, programs. And I wanna know, he, how you feel about that, and what would your numbers be at Fortson? Specifically, would you go extremely under capacity if you take the ninth graders out of there and isolate them in a school by themselves?
Well, right now, we have four open classrooms. I'm, let me make that clear. So, and those are the new classrooms that they're still working on.
So Fortson has four open classrooms right now?
We have four open classrooms that are in the process of being finished. So Link Crew, which is at all of our high schools, is an awesome program where we have assigned a mentor to each of the ninth grade students. So they do checks on them, uh, especially after report card, before report card. There's, so we do mix it up lunch so that they can meet other people in the school. You know, just acclimate them with, uh, some things. Some of the electives, which is good for the transition, they'll have maybe tenth graders in there or even eleventh so that they start to get along. I have talked to, uh, staff and students about a possibility, cause obviously this is public information. And I did not get any favorable response to moving the ninth grade academy to a separate building. I didn't. I just feel that with the Career Academy, what I'm planning on doing with the ninth grade and, and having them select a Career Academy, starting in the ten through twelve, there's a lot. there's a lot of work we need to do in the ninth grade to get them ready, and I need my upperclassmen to help me do that. That makes sense.
You know, since she said that, I want us to think back about when we recently were at the advanced accreditation team, when they came and they talked to our schools. And when they were rating our schools, and kind of giving us feedback, they gave us, you know, they said our school improvement office is second to none, and I, and I keep saying that, 'cause I'm so proud of that. But then when we got to the last slides, and they said, how could you improve? And I'm saying this right now, I wanted to say this in discussion, but you're, just to your point, what are things we need to work on? And that's exactly what they said we need to work on, is more of a connection between our ninth graders and our eleventh and twelfth graders in terms of mentoring.
Mentoring. The mentor piece is so important. The way that we actually did a mentoring program with my ninth graders, so we used, again, upperclassmen to work with our, some of our ninth graders, and it was excellent. We did a career fair at the end of it for those selected students.
So are there electives at the high, at the, at the ninth grade levels that are provided at Fortson that students would be deprived of if they were at a ninth grade academy?
Auto welding, home technology, those, you know, you have the equipment and everything there for those classes, and a lot of our ninth graders take those classes, home, life skills classes, those are the food, the clothing, interior design, and again, those are, they have some mixed students in them, and that's a good transition for them as they move on to the tenth grade. So that, they would lose those opportunities, and those are the opportunities I need to give them, to help them decide whether or not which academy that they wanna go into. And to try and find those exact teachers at another school, we're having trouble finding teachers, wood teachers, auto teachers, life skill teachers, there's a huge shortage. Some of the universities stopped even doing certification with those.
Trustee Elaine, and then, but back to you, Trustee Hamud, I don't think you're finished.
Oh, sorry. No, 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 I, I saved mine.
Oh, I wanna endorse that question, that's really good, and I'm so glad you brought that answer up, because that's really important. One thing that I wanted to state is that I think for special programs, like at the Berry Center, or, or any other place, in any of the other high schools, I would like to have, one of my goals would be to have access to any special programs for any student at any high school throughout the district. I mean, I think it's a good thing if we can have specialized programs. At Edsel, we had a terrific humanities program that I was so sorry to lose, and there's lots of other great ideas, but I did hear from one student, and it was an Edsel student, who told me, who's now in video at Wayne State, who said, I really wish I would have been able to do it in high school. So we, I, I don't think it's fair to have the luck of the draw, just if you happen to be here on this side or that side. I'd like to be able to make those things available to all of our students, that's one of my goals. And I guess transportation is a key to that. And then I wanted to ask, I, I really appreciate hearing that there's four extra classrooms. Are there any other extra class, or any open classrooms right now at Edsel or at Berry Center? So how much heat are we under? We already know about Mr. Merton. I don't wanna ask him.
Not at Michael Berry?
Not at Berry Center.
Sorry about that. I, I walked through all three buildings as a fresh set of eyes, and I did it because I was considered unbiased to any feat or track. Not that we do that, but you know what I mean. And so I can speak confidently and say, 'cause I did a second walk-through with Tim Brzezinski also, because he would know what is feasible versus me just looking at classrooms and saying, oh, we could fix this, or we could change this storage room and turn these, move these books. And so at Edsel, I'm very confident that there's space for at least four hundred students currently. Tons of space with, and, and these are based on classrooms that Tim is confident that, sorry, Scott, no. More for you...
Next time, take me on that walk.
More for you, more kids for you to love.
Need fresh eyes.
So I went through, so the four hundred that I'm saying is based on, not based on the mediocre locations, like, oh, we would really not rather turn this closet into a classroom, it's not that kind. It's, this is a computer lab that computers can go in carts and be moved around to classroom to classroom, and it's a huge space, and it's a beautiful room that could easily be converted into a, a regular classroom. Another example would be where you have a specialized classroom with a ton of space for seven kids, so that, those seven kids could have their needs met adequately, comfortably in another classroom that could be converted. There's like a kitchen, it's like three different types of rooms, it's kind of a unique location. Scott, I'm not sure off the top of my head, I think it's like a, there was like semi-teacher workroom, it looks like it used to be a home ec room, or like a life skills room maybe years ago, but with minimal construction, renovation, that would be beautiful space for kids. And I mean, I went through with the eyes of, what I want my kids in this class, in these classrooms, with, and then, of course, with Tim, Tim could say, yes, this could be done, or nah, that's probably not a good idea to break down that cinder block wall. So we did go through, and, and I can speak confidently when I say there's a lot of space at Edsel. At Dearborn High, there were about, there's a ready, I mean, did we, did that go through with the media center?
Um, yeah.
We're just finishing it up. So we found some beautiful space all around the media center at Dearborn High. I argue it's three classrooms. Adam, Adam was breathing down my neck through that walk.
You can see it, he doesn't think it's three classrooms.
I was, I was hoping she would find some magical space, go down, open the door or something.
No, I, I appreciate you accompanying...
Well, that's the sort of thing we did at Fortson with those four classrooms, but the other, the other factor to keep in mind is that some of the numbers, when we're looking at capacity, too, I believe it was like a thirty number per room. One of the things that we have now that's better than we've had in this district almost since I started is lower class size. So you also gotta look at, you know, when you say that, you're looking at numbers programmatically, and you can do that, but then, again, it's, okay, there's space, but then look at your numbers per class, and how many are actually there, and that's something we've talked about. So I, I agree, there's, there's definitely space, you know, based on the study, and I appreciate Mason going with Tim, because that was kind of the review, we wanted to make sure. It's just like when we're going to the elementary middle that the board has talked about, let's find out where we have space. And I would say, though, that even if you do expand, you know, the expansions, the space is never lost, because what happens is it helps program, it helps increase, and that's kind of what's being used at the elementary middle and other places, you may have specialized rooms that are being used. So when you do get tighter, you can do it, but I guess, I'm glad that you went, so this gives the board some security, that there is some room in transition periods, as we're looking at construction and other things, that we can fit, you know, students are not gonna have too many in, in Edsel Ford.
We tried out, like, when I was doing the math, I tried it out with twenty-five per classroom, and then with thirty. And so obviously, we want lower numbers in our classrooms, so I was going, so the four hundred, like I said, that's not including, I didn't count in that other space, because it wasn't like optimal space, or it wasn't maybe desire, most desirable space. So that number's based on space that I would be comfortable having my kids sit in and learn in.